So are we set? Okay, everybody stand and call this meeting to order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So may we have roll call?
Eels.
Here.
Brazil.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Stokes.
Hawn Lane.
Okay, so may I have an approval of the agenda? A motion?
I move that we approve the agenda.
A second? Okay, roll call? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Here, yes.
Aye.
Okay, moving forward. Now, we have public participation for those without an agenda item. Is there anyone here for public?
I would like to share an email from Ellen Hossi.
Hossi.
So Ellen just wanted us to know that she was really grateful to be considered and is disappointed that she cannot fulfill the district's needs as the board secretary. We have got Kathy who stepped up to help us with that. She just wanted to share this experience will not impact my pride in our Cripple Creek Victor School District and all who are associated with it. Our community's future is shaped by the dedication and passion of each person who works and volunteers for our district, as well as the interests and energies of our students and their families. The school district is a vital part of this community. I would venture to consider it the heart of southwest Heller County, and I look forward to opportunities to be supportive. Our students, their families, and our community's future deserve that from each resident. Please allow me to extend my gratitude, best wishes, and most respectful compliments to you and to superintendent me for considering me for this position, and to the members of the school board for allowing me the opportunity to try out for coordinating secretary position. Thank you, be well, you're a pioneer.
So would you send her a thank you?
Of course.
Okay, thanks so much. So as always, it's an honor to serve here as a board member. And again, we are change agents. We have our hands-on hope, and we are united in purpose in mind to serve our children and our community. With that said, I wanted to take and sort of start out this with a bang to take and say congratulations to Elaine, Kathy, and Miriam for putting us over the leap February 29th to get our audit done and submitted. First in three years that I believe comes with a 70,000 bonus or something.
Well, possibly if we get, if we get this high-cost reimbursement for students who are in special education, then yeah, we could see an additional 70,000.
And we got our taxes from the county?
Yes, well, we have not received our taxes yet. We did receive the 1% sales tax check revenue from January and from, what was it?
Yes.
Fifty-four thousand dollars.
All right. Woo-hoo! And by the way, great job, guys. Thank you so much for your hard work, seriously, because I knew that was a tough one.
I didn't do anything with the audit, but.
Hey, Dennis.
So we have a benefit for you. So.
You were a contributor. How much was it so I can let Rachel know what her postcard is?
This is for you. And I was going to put a bottle of champagne in there.
Are you kidding? It's Reese's money where you can make that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'll put you into spring.
Yeah.
And it's so like Easter when you're picking up grass for your year.
Fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventeen cents. That's so adorable. I was getting it. Thank you so much.
That's a prank.
And I want you to know, I was told in no uncertain terms that that 1%, we weren't going to get much money from that.
Oh, yeah, that's what we.
No, I was, I was told that, and I just looked at him, and I said, you know, I'm not the smartest guy ever graduated from Bedford High School, but they taught me how to cipher, and I know 1% of sales tax is going to be.
But I'll let the people on the committee know.
Thank you. Yeah, it's so exciting, so rewarding, and we know that we're going to be able to.
That's a salary.
Great things.
Yes.
Since somebody's salary.
Yes.
And that's, think about it, that's January. What do you think July and August is going to be?
Well, actually.
February.
February.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
In the Ice Castle, yes.
Yeah, because there was absolutely no getting into.
I'm glad you told me that, because the guy that told me we weren't going to make any money, I don't want to go.
You want to get to him personally?
You know I'm going to poke that bear.
Okay, so moving on again. Bravo, bravo. Thank you, thank you.
My hero.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank God it was a leap year.
Yes. Okay, so next.
Well, but thank God it was a year leap year.
So moving on then to reports. So Miriam.
Yeah, before I get into the successes and the challenges, does anyone have any questions about the report I submitted this month?
No. No, excellent job. I certainly appreciated the encapsulation of the Matt Cook, you know, board retreat and moving forward perspectives. Thank you.
Again, the sales tax, the audit being submitted, the EZ Grant Award, and, you know, these different organizations that are seeking out Cripple Creek Victor School District to be a part of their research projects and just what's happening in their very large nationwide organizations, they're calling little old Cripple Creek and asking us to be a part of.
Why aren't we blowing our horn on that?
I mean, you know, I don't know if we're necessarily blowing our horn, but we're trying to share, you know, as much as possible. But it's just, it's very affirming to know that the work that we're doing is.
Obviously, somebody did something right.
A lot of people are doing.
Exactly my point, yeah.
But that doesn't come without its challenges, right? You know? And so this time of year starts to get pretty hectic for people. I actually read an article about superintendents and that they're not often included in the whole, like, health and well-being or, you know what I mean? Like, they kind of get glossed over. And so, you know, it just had some, it had some stats, but I just thought it was so sad because when they polled superintendents on their, whether or not they feel chronic stress or dissatisfaction, 80% of them said that they did on almost a daily basis. Compared to 33% of people in similar, like, degree professions, you know, careers. And that just was like, wow, almost all of them feel that way on an almost daily basis. Really high turnover rate with women's superintendents being in the lead of, like, 37% turnover rate. And then each year, 63%, whether they actually do or not, say that they're considering leaving their position, not going to another superintendent position, but leaving the superintendency. Yeah. So just keeping that in mind, I know that I've got to make sure that I'm taking care of my mental health and well-being as well, you know, so that I can keep doing my job. But it's a lot in this time of year. You're wrapping one year up and planning for the next, but, you know, it'll all get done as it always does, so.
And again, commendations to Elaine for putting that in the newspaper in terms of your performance evaluation and how that was framed in there. And I, again, I just thought truly a witness to the community at a very specific time where I think it will reap some fruit.
Yeah, that would really.
Especially since there's going to be a lot of elementary people looking for jobs.
Anyway, thank you, and again, congratulations, Miriam.
I have a question, and this is just wide open. Does it seem weird that the special ed numbers are that high to you? Are we just being fortunate on slot?
It seemed like two-thirds of our new enrollees came with an IEP with them this year.
That's insane.
Yeah, and then we've had four that weren't considering for staffing in this year. It's just.
I just about.
It seems to ebb and flow, but this year seems to be an extraordinarily high rate.
Yeah.
So across the United States, the special ed numbers have increased. There was an article, again, in the Wall Street Journal last week, and in particular about one case in California where this parents sued the district for a, what, not conforming to the IEP. She had dyslexia, and they said that one district spent 1.3 million in court fees for that one case, and it now has proceeded to the Supreme Court.
I think we have seven students new to the district this year that came in with IEP at Preston alone. And then we have had three IEP referrals that were a parent request. So.
And validated?
Some of them are still in process, so. Yeah, it's.
And I know Miriam was talking about the money we might receive because we have the audit in for those high-cost students and high-need students. One student alone is 79,000 a year. One student. We have, I think there's three other ones with 70,000 on top. But we haven't gotten those monies for the last, well, it says the last audit was fallen on time. So Diane Fossey said she was going to give me those numbers as to, you know, what kind of money. We don't get 100% reimbursement, but, you know, at least it's based on that cost. But we weren't even considered the last year, so. I mean, one year, I think she said we had seven students that were above the 25,000, so.
Good.
But even if you think about that, back to your comment, it's a salary.
Exactly, yeah. So, and it's money that the district is spending that, you know, we haven't even been able to request for the past few years, so.
I feel like we should just adjourn and then head to someplace where we could really celebrate.
Dan is recovering from his dentist appointment and unable to share, so we'll let him have the night off. How about that?
That'd be great.
I don't think I have anything on his.
Well, good thing on his data in terms of the peer counseling. Again, that has been a lot of effort and a lot of movement with a lot of parts to get that accomplished, so.
And if you guys do have any questions about his report, I might be able to speak to it. And then also, the AI draft is actually right behind, right behind Tanya's front page of her report, so it just got out of order, but.
Okay.
Yeah, I saw that. That just scares me, that whole thing.
Oh, I know.
Because it's like, are you going to learn how to write before you graduate, or are you just going to steal? Actually, I didn't have any questions. What do you, what do you think the reasoning is with less involvement on the literacy days? Just apathy or day?
It was really hard to get that kind of coordinated. I know, because Jayden had that, and I would have wanted to do that, but it just, there just were a lot of things that ran interference, you know?
It was surprising, huh, Tanya? Like, the, you know?
Because it was slammed last year, right?
What?
I think it was not slammed like Math and Science Night because we held it during the day. I think the idea of being able to get different families in. But I think last year we had something like 56 attendees compared to 14 this year.
And it was early, it was in the morning, you know? And again, it just, it just didn't, couldn't work out for us. And I don't remember the specifics, but it just, it's not that we didn't want to be there, but, you know? And then obviously, Jayden isn't talking this up at all. You know what I mean?
Well, and I think that whole week was a bit of a downer for people.
Yeah, because of CK.
Yes, and I, so I think there just was not a lot of spare enthusiasm.
Yeah, it just.
It was still great. The kids loved it.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
And that's what matters, right? Because we're doing it for them, so.
I thought the setting was hilarious.
Okay, another time.
I know. So.
She was sneaking.
Yeah, go forward.
Okay, so aside from the AI, if you actually go past the newsletter, then there's the last page of my board report. Sorry, I skipped that. So I didn't know if there are any questions, but I wanted to read to you since the picture didn't paint in color what this second grader wrote.
Okay.
And this is a picture of herself that she has created there. Let me tell you all about how to catch a soft, patty snowflake on your tongue. First, put on fluffy clothes. Next, go outside and stick your tongue out, and boom, you got a snowflake. Let's go inside and chill, and that's how it's done.
That's good.
Well, I'm glad I do that.
So I just needed to share because they were all really good.
How adorable.
They did a fabulous job. I love the voice.
Yes, and the differences in sound.
Yes.
The contrast of this snowflake and then, yeah.
So are there any other thoughts of that?
Yeah, there used to be a show called By With Art Link Letter, the kids say the darkest things, you know? And this is a perfect example.
Then there's Miriam.
Did love to make sure in my newsletter that our families also get to start seeing some of our behind-the-scenes people, because it's not often during drop-off or pickup from conferences that they get to see our food service folks who are integral in our kids' school day. And I think that Preston, and over here, I'm sure, I just don't get to see them regularly, Preston has some very dedicated food service employees who work really hard. And not just preparing a food, but we have a couple of kiddos with some serious food allergies, and they, they just work that into their day and go out of their way to make the, a great meal happen for those kids, too.
I think you've got a really good, hard-working crew in that system now, and they all think. They get them on, they're creative because they're parents, and they just, they think on their feet like that. It's really neat.
And they just, they just love the kids.
Yeah, they do. They're just, they just light up when you talk to them. On Tom's report, I gave him the name, when he was telling me about this situation, I gave him the name of a top-notch contractor that I have used for years and many other people have that can do that repair. And it'll be done right. It won't be a five-and-eight.
Anything further that the board wishes to bring to our attention? Okay, then moving on. So the business meeting, new business, so the consent agenda, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I need to have the board minutes from the last meeting changed because I wasn't actually absent. Physically, I wasn't here; ears-wise, I was here. And then all of a sudden, you went away, and I don't know what happened after.
I'm going to record and move on, but I do have a question on the medical.
I think, Donna, just for.
Wait, I'll come back to that.
Just to be safe on the different motions and the votes, if you can hear you vote on them, then let's keep it, like, for roll call, obviously, but just in case, right?
Oh, it's our friend's?
Yeah.
Okay. I just don't want to be counted in.
So what, what is the amendment?
So basically, for roll call, that she was in attendance, you know, virtually, but I think we have to review the minutes to ensure that we're not saying she voted on something if we cannot hear her vote for it.
Okay, so can we have the minutes show that she was here via?
Remote.
In a remote listening capacity with the inability to vote? Or the inability to be heard in the meeting?
Yeah, because Tanya was left out.
Yeah, I think if, if we just take it and put that in the minutes and maybe in parentheses, tactical difficulties. Okay, so may I have a second then to that amendment?
I will second that.
Okay, roll call?
Eels.
Aye.
Brazil.
Aye.
Hawn Lane. Green.
Aye.
Stokes.
Aye.
Okay, so before going on to the next agenda item, Mark had a question about Lorene's report.
Well, the question I've got is, we've got apparently a dental bus coming up. And the way I'm reading this, we have approximately 142 people that are, that are eligible for the free dental. How are we contacting this? How are we getting that word out? Because that's kind of an important thing.
Yeah, Tanya, do you want to share?
So it started, we have a couple of ways that are happening. So it started with an infant campus going out to all of the families, infant campus email, followed by today's last week, actually, Lorian stood in the parking lot with me and with her stack full of papers and went family to family, working with them. So the nursing staff has really been working on contacting those families that we are positive that they would affect and trying to make sure that those families all know about it.
Okay, is there anything we can do to get more of that information out, or? I'll be happy to.
You know what? Let me ask Lorene what are percentages of the eligible families that are signed up.
Okay, okay, great, yeah, because that's, this is something I think is really, really important, particularly since we don't really have a real strong dental program up here in the city, so. I was, I'd like, anything, anything I can do, if you need banners, posters, happy to donate them. Just let me know, and I'll get them out.
Thank you.
And I have to tell you, we benefited from this when Jayden was in first grade, so he went to the free dental clinic, and they observed that he had a growth on his tongue, which hampered his speech, but did not see it as to the location of it. But it was quite scary because it could have been malignant. It, it turned out, he did have to have surgery, and it was not malignant, but it was a, a big medical procedure to go in and remove that. That would not have been detected without that mobile program. Yes, so again, I, I can tell you that as a family, we benefited firsthand from that.
I can too. My, I have a niece that's so, Hossi, and we talk a lot of services from the Ronald McDonald House. This one actually is even more so because the Ronald McDonald and several of the others are more of a dental screening, and this one is, they can work with coating the cavities, and they can do more than a screening.
Yes, that's what I'm seeing here. It's a full, really a full dental service. So this is kind of, this is really nice.
I, I would hope that there would be press on that day, that there could be some pictures taken, and that, again, even having Pat Hill show up or, or Tanya, you take it and put something.
I know an excellent photographer.
And Mark, yeah, I'm sorry I let you out. Yeah, again, to get this put out in terms of the media.
Yeah, I think definitely some pictures and an article. I'll, I'll talk to the healthcare staff.
Yeah, that, that would be great.
Do we have to have waivers?
Yeah, we, well, we already know who would be on that list, and we would also ask, right, can we use the picture, so.
Okay, so next on the agenda is the approval of the February 2024 payables, payrolls. So may I have a motion for that?
I have a motion to pay the bills.
Second?
I will second that.
Okay, roll call? Aye.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Stokes.
Stokes?
Stephanie?
Okay. Okay, moving forward.
Sorry, aye.
Okay.
I'm here, sorry, I couldn't get it unmuted. Aye.
The next is the first reading of the EVCE policies.
I'll do.
Okay.
I would just like to point out on that policy, EVCE, we just had to add in district-specific information, and since we're not printing in color to save money, it is 1, 2, 3, 4. The fifth paragraph was added, "The district will provide necessary hardware, software, and provide take-home materials, assignments, et cetera, as applicable." So that was added. File EVCE, fifth paragraph down, "District will provide necessary hardware, software, and provide take-home materials, assignments, et cetera."
I'll have that.
EVCE.
Fifth paragraph says, "To ensure all students have the ability." Fifth paragraph says to ensure all students have the ability to access their lessons via remote instruction of the district. Is that what you're saying? Didn't sound like that.
The paragraph right underneath it, during days of remote instructions, teachers will take attendance and monitor student participation through Google Classroom and. So those are the two things that were added that are district specific.
Okay. Now, are we?
Okay.
Ready?
Yes.
Okay, first reading of EBCE, school closings and cancellations.
So just to, okay, is this the motion part? Can she move at this time and then read these in? How does this work?
He's got a motion.
Oh, okay.
Because I'm reading, he's got a motion.
Okay, okay.
Ready?
Yes.
School closings and cancellations, F policies for revision, FB facilities planning, FBR facilities planning, FBC prioritization of facilities improvement, FBCR prioritization of facilities improvement, FD facilities funding, FDA bond campaigns, F policies for removal, FA facilities development goals slash priority objectives, FEA educational specifications, FEF contractors affidavits and guarantees, FEG construction contracts bidding and awards.
Okay.
We need a motion from our.
So can I?
I will say.
Okay.
He's got a first and I got a second.
Okay, you're the first to move.
I move to approve.
Okay, and a second.
I second that.
Okay, roll call?
Beals.
Aye.
Brazil.
Sorry.
Green.
Aye.
Stokes.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, next is the approval of the Head Start corrective action plan. May I have a motion?
My motion that we approved that.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call?
Beals.
Aye.
Brazil.
Aye.
Conley. Green.
Aye.
Stokes.
Aye.
Okay, next up is the approval of the K through 12 accounting contract.
It's the K 12 accounting is the firm, the accounting firm. And if it is the pleasure of the board to move forward with them, they can begin April 1, actually making that transition. It does save the district about $27,000 going this route compared to what, you know, previous business manager with benefits and such, so.
So my question is, if I'm reading this right, because it's quite lengthy, we are still contributing the information, right? They're compiling it and finding all the glitches ahead of time. How cool are we paying to do that and how is that laid out?
So K 12 is basically taking the place of the business manager.
Okay.
So they'll be working with Kathy for various items that they need, but they'll be doing the bulk of the business manager responsibilities.
Okay.
So they're the business manager.
And you're comfortable with just feeding them information? Yeah, okay.
This has been a lengthy process of working everything out, so.
Well, yeah, because I'm looking at all the stuff that the client has to provide. And if we have a person doing that full time or they they're doing something else, I'm concerned. You know, that that's a lot of load.
Well, this is this is the same accounting firm we met with on the Zoom meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, I like these guys.
Yeah, and this we worked this out prior to them creating the proposal as a as a team and then with them, so.
Aye.
I move we approve the K 12 accounting contract.
Okay, I'll second that.
Roll call?
Brazil.
Aye.
Beals.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next is the approval of the accounting software vendor. So do you want to speak to this, Miriam, or?
Yeah, and you know, so the previous business manager opted to change software, accounting software programs when they joined the school district and.
Well, how'd that work out?
Um, not well. So, you know, since Elaine, I mean Kathy has had issues with this program over and over again. Elaine's had issues. It's just not great. And then we come to find out that no other school district in the state uses this program either, this this software program. So we have been getting and and having lots of conversations, thank you Elaine and Kathy, because I wasn't in all of them, with other software accounting systems. And this is just a breakdown of what we currently have, which is AccuFund. And then if we convert back to Olio, which we had back in 2015 through
We did that for a long time.
2020. They have they're now called Link, but we love it, love the platform. It's user friendly. It has everything that we need. There's that level of comfort and support. And you can see there that it really isn't going to cost us really any more than what we're currently using. And what we're currently using is awful, so.
So is it going to be a nightmare to transfer?
They think for the conversion, they wanted to have us online by September 1 because they thought that's when our students came back. And I said, no, ours come back August 1. So they're going to shoot for an August 1. They are thinking it would be, it won't be as bad as other schools because we were with them before. So they're hoping that that conversion we can do in July and June, July, and then, you know, start to come up. Probably we will have to transfer data back into Olio through two systems at one time for the month of July, which is better than what someone, which is like September, or so you'd be doing two or three months in. So they feel they can get us converted and and back up and running. But then we'll be starting in in like April or May already, so just like the accounting.
I'd like to know another audit.
Well, kind of, but you know, they're going to they're going to take our data and and put it in. Plus, they also said that they probably would be able to bring in our old data that we had prior.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe that's where the missing money is.
It's a night, you know, it's stressful and unconscionable to change, right, a major system. But it's necessary, I think.
And then they said, once we get past the conversion, and of course, we had sticker shock through the conversion. They originally told us $128,000 to convert. And I said, are you caring? No, we'll we'll give you a 20% discount, so $103,000. And I went back and looked and as you can see on that paper, we paid $3,000 to convert in 2015. And it's like, how how much of an increase is that, you know? Well, we're on the cloud now and inflation. I don't think it's gone up that much. I mean.
Yes.
So we told them we wouldn't get them. It was out of the question and they weren't going to come down for that. So they kind of split the cost in half. And then I made them split it over two years, two of our fiscal years. So we don't get hit with a major hit in one year.
Yeah.
Split it over two years. And so they kind of based it on what we were paying and said, well, we can come in right around that figure. But then year four, we're only going to have this $12,000. That's it, as an annual cost, as an annual cost.
It amazes.
And they have a lot of support. I mean, you would call them up, you know, you you email them. If you needed a call, they call you. They still have their support group up in Denver. So there is a lot of support that goes on and not everything is extra.
There's a lot of the support people that we used to talk to actually are still there.
They're still there, so. And we did look at AccuFund, but it had some disadvantages. It didn't have all the things that, you know, we kind of looked for. And some of it was cumbersome. I think was a lot of it was in payroll, was very cumbersome to work with. So if you really change, you really should change for the better. And, you know, and and they too would have been, you know, it would have been less with them, but, you know, we never worked with them before. A lot of their modules were extra cost. So if you want the time and attendance module, that's going to be extra. If you want this module, that's going to be extra. So this was basically the first year with the bare minimum. So, you know, it probably would have cost more if we added those other features.
Per year.
But we have a lot of staff who already are familiar with Olio, who are still here. So Miriam worked with it. I think Tanya a little bit worked with it. But Meryl worked with it. She's familiar with it. The school secretaries are familiar with it. You can see the lead and who's out now.
Yeah, it's going to lighten a lot of what I have to do with this system that was implemented. The extra things I had to take over off the secretaries because they weren't able to do it and have access to it.
Well, at this point, I think we are, we should, I would like to move that we approve Link, is it?
Link.
As our new software vendor.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call?
Beals.
Aye.
Brazil.
Aye.
Conley. Green.
Aye.
Stokes.
Aye.
Okay.
One question, are, do you need to sign it or do you authorize Miriam to sign the contract for K 12 accounting and for the software?
I I believe that we can authorize Miriam to sign it. We've done things equally.
Sure.
Okay, next is our information. So BOSI's update.
Okay, so Suzanne Patterson, former of the Park, is the new board president. And the two board members from Manitou Springs are kick. I think they're going to be really good. And BOSI's actually voted to and joined Casby at our last meeting. Our, I forgot our name, Gutierrez from Casby, oh, Christina. Christina actually came, did a presentation and explained the the benefits of joining Casby. And I think that's going to be very enlightening because they have some policies that are really not okay to have. And so we'll be going through the same process there that we're going through. And then probably the next hurdle is going to be doing the same thing with their audit that we had going on with ours. And now I have an enlightened opinion on that. So otherwise, I think it's going well. Do you have anything to add?
Um, no.
I don't think so. But anyway, yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
Board of tenancy events.
Anything between now and the next board meeting that you guys may be attending?
Got to help them. Can't think of anything. Let me look.
No. Okay.
I'm going to do a row roundtable, but that's not even in here.
Okay, next, accounting audit update.
I mean, we've kind of gone over everything at this point. With the forensic auditors, there's two firms. The first is called Forvis. They're both out of Colorado Springs. I'm working with Rand, Graham, role, Amber. The other firm is Biggs Crawford.
Oh, we know them.
Okay, and Tyler Atkins with Biggs Crawford. But again, you know, I need them to give me a proposal, right? So that I can bring it back to you. Also, I don't know if you guys want to maybe have a Q and A with them, talk to them about what it is, what it isn't. I can gather that information and just share it with you. But if that's something you'd like to have happen, I'm happy to put that together so that you can actually ask the questions. So just let me know.
I was going to say, let's just see what their proposals are.
Okay.
Yeah, let's go from there.
I think it might be beneficial just with the things that were uncovered in the Head Start work session and what you've revealed in terms of, I can't remember what, how you phrased it. The due tos and the due froms. And that, what, confusion? I that, you know, may be something that, I don't know, we can give some leads as to why we are requesting this and what we consider as as problematic that may reveal this so that they they know that we're really not looking for, you know, fraud or malfeasance, et cetera. That it again, it is this this kind of thing that a lot of things were went to general fund.
Yeah.
So anything to make it simpler and less expensive.
Yeah, I mean, if we want them to go through with a fine tooth comb and really, you know, uncover anything and everything that we need to be aware of, then, you know, I don't see it being any cheaper if we ask them to, you know, I think if we're going to do it, then we need to do it 100%, like everything reviewed and looked over. I'm not saying that that happened, but, you know, and I don't believe that it happened. But I also believe that that's the purpose of a forensic audit, to dispel any type of, of, you know.
Well, it it'll be interesting because with three firms, obviously, you're going to kind of pick up a, what? I don't know, a modus operandi as to how this all shakes down.
And I only have two firms that, but I'll, I'm trying to find a third.
I think I think this is important from the standpoint, it's kind of like, you know, pull the bandage off quick. You know, we don't know that there was any improprieties, but this way we can, when there's any, there there won't be any question at that loss.
Exactly.
It's time that we we sit down. I think I think what we ran into here is is somebody not knowing where to put pigeon hole this or pigeon hole that. But until we do this, we don't know that for sure.
Yeah.
And i- if we are going to continue on the direction we're going, I will say this. I I am so unbelievably impressed with the staff we have here and the work you guys have all done, every one of you. I I just can't, I've seen the bad side of education, okay? And I don't see that here at all. So I can just say that I think it's important that we do everything we can to be as transparent and open because the taxpayers are the ones that are putting the bill. And we have to be, we have to be, we have to be upfront with them.
Yeah.
You know, so, yeah, I think this is, even though it may be an expense, it's an expense, it's well, you know.
Well, and I'd like to be able to say with 100% certainty, and I think anyone in this room would want to say with 100% certainty, no, that didn't happen.
Exactly.
But but unless we we.
Can prove it.
Take the time.
Here's here's the here's the proof.
Yeah.
You know, and that's that's what's important.
I I'm working on it anyway, guys, to get those bits to you all and.
Well, there's a lot going on.
I think because it's taxes.
Oh, yes, yes.
If I could, I have a couple of things. First off, our financial transparency, which is on our website, it's it has not been updated because we have not had our audits in on time. And that that information is picked up by an outside company. because we have not had our audits in all time and that, that information is picked up by an outside company.
It's a credit rating.
And put up on our website, so it hasn't been there in a couple of years. So, you know, if the state wanted to, they could get on us because certain requirements are mandatory for on that website and that financial transparency, uh, is one of them. So hopefully this year that will be corrected. And I know that Ralph is working on, he was going to check the C D E website and make sure that we get everything on our website that is required.
I think we're well on our way. I mean, based against the, the audit and where we stood, and, and I think we're well on our way to seeing that happen.
And I received, Jessie gave me, she's one of the auditors, she gave me the information, um, and to go ahead to go, it was with all the journal, there was forty journal entries to correct our data to what it needed to be, to be submitted. And so she gave those to me late Friday night, so I worked Saturday. Couldn't get a hold of her Sunday and started back on Monday. And between Jessie and working with Kelly and Yolanda at the state level, they were very quick to respond to any questions or any problems that I presented with answers on how to fix that. And so we submitted at about quarter to nine on, uh, Thursday morning.
Wonderful. Really.
Well, I appreciate your brain drain.
Because they turned around and they got me a cake and flowers.
And you guys eat the whole cake, I'll be so cold.
A bedroll.
Oh, it's hard, we didn't send you home early, sorry. Please go.
Okay, any, anything else from the board? May I have a motion for?
Well, can I just talk about CK's?
Oh, I almost forgot that, I'm sorry.
Just to say, I, I wanna make sure that, um, the city gets some thanks for coming in today with a, uh, large equipment.
A loader, yeah, it was nice.
Moving a lot of snow out of our parking lot today.
That's good.
And it, it was very nice of them. They just showed up, started moving snow for us.
Nobody invited them, they just came?
It was, you know, at some point, somebody had said, but it was not, apparently they had a minute or two today and they showed up and started moving snow for us.
Yeah, cause there was, it was bad.
Maybe we need to do it, thank you, for them.
And I've already sent an email.
Okay.
I will definitely, um, you know, do more. It was.
Okay.
We've been so short on parking spaces.
Oh, and it's icy too.
Oh, that would be good.
Cookies on the cafe.
Yeah, something. Last time I got them, a case of beer.
Okay. So then, on CK, so it will be June fifteenth and actually that was their wedding anniversary. And so it will be somewhat bittersweet. And, uh, again, you saw the article and obviously the picture was just glorious of, uh, CK, very comforting. There will be an obituary that will go in, uh, to the paper. I believe it'll be in next Wednesday's paper. And it's, it's a little more, uh, biography. So I, I think everybody will find that, uh, comforting too.
Is the Crescent Gym gonna be large enough for this?
It's not going to be there. It will be here in this gym and then this, um, uh, cafeteria will be used for the reception.
Seen somewhere where it was in the Crescent, when I'm like.
No.
Okay.
But the Crescent is going to be dedicated in her name.
Yes.
At, and you'll, you'll take and give us details further down the road.
Yeah, and, um, Wanda asked today, she's going to send out a message to the staff to see if any of the kids want to write something to CK that can then be presented during that.
If you could get me a nice photograph of her, I'll do a memorial photograph, a large one, for the memorial.
Oh, that would be great.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay. Okay.
I have questions related to that. First of all, what do we, what do you want us to do to show up? We have work to do for that.
For what?
For the memorial service.
Well, I have to tell you that right now, there's a lot of things happening behind the scenes, but it, it's more, uh, in regards to Rodney and his health issues. So tomorrow, uh, one of my sons will transport him for an MRI and then he has a doctor's appointment on Thursday. I'm gonna be going to it just because I can know the lay of the land. And then, then there's just a lot of other things that will be propelled by that because I, I think he fell and, uh, broke his arm and cracked his elbow and, uh, there at work and then tore that rotor cuff, rotor cuff? Yeah, rotator cuff. And so we're just not sure if, he's anticipating he'll have to have surgery. And so that's, that's kind of the major thing that, that needs to play out right now to get all that accomplished.
Do you want, do you guys wanna adjourn and talk to some of the?
Well, yeah, I just, I, yeah, let's do that. And then, um, I had a question that one of the kids asked me about caps and gowns for seniors. Don't we pay for those?
We did it before, but now just placed an order for, um, for all of the gowns and we will just recycle them with students. Um, and then the students will buy their caps.
Okay, great, cause this young lady was a little worried about money.
No, we will provide them.
And, and that's, that's very good.
Yeah, cause I mean, it's a thing. Okay.
Okay. So I, you know, I'm sorry, it probably went too long here, but anyway, uh, can I have a motion for adjournment?
I motion to adjourn.
Have a second.
Roll call.
Fields.
Aye.
Brazil.
Aye.
Conley. Green.
Aye.
Stephanie, say goodnight.